Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. At this time, I'll call the November 12th Planning Board meeting to order. May I ask that everyone stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business world with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? All right. I believe we have a quorum of four people. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the October 8th meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll motion to approve.
You have a motion?
I have a second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. The minutes from October 8th meeting are approved. Do we have any old business? No old business. Moving on to the first item. We have PB 1926 Nutrient Ag Solutions text amendment, request to amend Chapter 4 and Chapter 10 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow distribution of agronomic products in the agriculture, limited business, general business, light industrial, and heavy industrial zoning districts. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the First Amendment we'll be speaking about tonight is proposed by Nutrient Ag Solutions, and what they're proposing to do is to expand their business, their existing business. It's currently zoned general business. And what they do is they distribute agronomic products. That includes things like fertilizer, seed, soil amendments, that type of thing. We're proposing this to be allowed under the same use category as agricultural distribution, which is more, is based more on actual produce and having that in a central location to be distributed. So, the amendment is to allow this new category, agronomic distribution, under the same zoning districts, which are, mentioned earlier, are agriculture, limited, and general business, and light and heavy industrial. Also going to include a definition of agronomic products, which is basically what I just said. It's a, it's a place where these products can be received and redistributed, seeds, fertilizers, soil, and plant amendments. Current ordinance language requires that distribution hubs have direct access to a major arterial or collector street. This particular existing business does not have that. They've been in existence since that was a requirement. What they do have access to is a railway, and a lot of their product comes in on the railway. So, we're also proposing to change the ordinance to allow access to a railway to be a criteria that can be met to have this business be there, over and above the arterial streets. For protection of properties that would be located to either new agronomic distribution businesses or existing ones that expand over 50%, they would, they would be required to meet the screening requirements in the ordinance, which is a fully opaque screen through fence or vegetation, or a combination of the two, to protect adjoining property owners.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Here's the existing site. Forgot to switch slides there, sorry. So, they're proposing another building on this site. You can see the site. Most of the site's already being used for the vehicular access and that sort of thing. It'd just be another building on this particular site. There's the zoning, general business. You can see there's some heavy industrial up there in the top left, and some other ag uses that are possibly industrial in nature there in the front. So, the area itself kind of lends itself to this type of use along the railway there. So, staff recommendation. We recommend an approval of the text amendment as submitted, including any staff additions and recommendations. And it's consistent with the goals and objectives of the land use plan, and the request is reasonable in the public interest. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Where did you see the, where did you, what pages was your consistency statement?
Oh, sorry, page 14 in the packet. Item 2.
Okay. No questions? Is there anyone present to represent this, or is this just you? All right. Well, come on up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm here, and the business is located at 119 Central Lane, Shawboro. And the, what we're proposing to do is put a new warehouse in place of some old structures that are already there. It's what we would like to do, but we've got to get the zoning correctly so we can do that. What we're proposing to put there is going to actually be a lot more aesthetically pleasing than what's there today. The thing that I saw in this was that, under the general business and agricultural, there's some other ag retail-related businesses that are mentioned specifically in there, but agronomic products were not, were not there. So, that's what we're just asking for, is to include us so that we can use the zoning as it currently stands to fit in with the other, the other things that are already in that particular zoning code.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for this gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this, other than these gentlemen. All right. Close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? All right. Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I recommend a motion to approve the text amendment as submitted, including the staff additions and recommendations.
With the consistency statement of the 2006 land use plan?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We got all kinds of seconds. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Is that it for that one? On to the next one. We have PB 1927 QHOC of Windswept Pines driveway width and setback text amendment. Request to amend Chapter 5 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow driveway widths of up to 40 feet when located on a street with, with a curb and gutter section and where the allowable lot coverage is not exceeded. The amendment would, also proposes to revise Chapter 3 to reduce the driveway setback from side property lines to 5 feet as opposed to the current requirement of 10 feet. And, Mr. Literal, that's you again.
Me again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start by just giving a little bit of background, I suppose, as to where this text amendment is coming from and the county's views on it. Prior to 1989, there were very little regulation on this type of site development aspect. There were no driveway width requirements or setbacks, per se, back then. And most likely because it was sparsely populated on larger lots. As development continued through the years, particularly at the beach, this became an issue where the lots were smaller and there were a lot of homes going up. We realized that we needed some regulations to try to alleviate the stormwater issues in the county that were popping up. Those standards came in the form of setbacks for the driveways at 10 feet from the side property lines. And we also began to regulate the width of driveways. And we based that 24-foot maximum width for residential driveway on NCDOT standards at the time. This is becoming an increasing issue on the mainland as well due to the increased development, particularly in the northern end of the county where the soils are draining poorly and development is heavy. So, we, we still, in the current ordinance, have that NCDOT recommendation of 24 feet for a maximum driveway width. And we still haven't placed the 10-foot setback from side property lines to allow more space, more natural grassy area, and what have you, for infiltration of stormwater and less, potentially less runoff to the neighboring lots as a way to try to alleviate the stormwater issues. This is basically a two-part text amendment that's being proposed. Part 1 would be to allow driveways up to 40 feet wide at the property line. Part 2 being a decreased setback of 5 feet instead of 10 from side property lines for the driveway concrete.
And this text amendment, the driveways with this enlarged driveway width would only be in those subdivisions, in those residential subdivisions, that are curb and gutter. And curb and gutter is part of their stormwater management plan. So, these larger driveways, once again, would only be in the curb and gutter environment and new residential subdivisions.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
So, I've got some, before we go there, I've got, I've got some other things. The, I just kind of want to go over each of the requests briefly and give some examples. So, the width request. There are several driveways located in Windswept Pines in particular. It's a newer subdivision being developed right now where the driveways have been constructed that exceed 24 feet. I want to say that they range from 33 to like 38 feet in width, the ones that are out there already. So, that's kind of where the request is coming from. They, when the plans for those developments came in, they showed driveways that met the current ordinance requirements of 24 feet. And I'm not sure at what point those were poured that exceeded that amount. But I just wanted to mention that they weren't permitted that way. We had some conversation with DOT about where their requirements come from. We, we haven't gotten clear guidance from them on that. It may be that some of that requirement comes from a subdivision that's based on culverts and swales, roadside swales. And the concern that the wider the culvert is, the more issues you may have with that drainage and that ditch working properly. I haven't gotten clear direction from them on that yet. I don't feel like I got a full answer. So, there's that. I just wanted to mention that. Also, it's important to know that although DOT has that standard of 24 feet as the recommended maximum residential driveway width, they will, on a case-by-case basis, allow up to 50 feet in width. We also have concerns that if this becomes the standard width for driveways in a new subdivision, what effect does that have on that, the streets in that subdivision being accepted into the maintenance program, the DOT maintenance program? And we haven't really gotten an answer from them on that either. So, what? I have some examples. This is one driveway. It's 34 feet wide in that subdivision.
And we measured the width of the driveway at, at the right-of-way. Where, so where that driveway meets the right-of-way, the property line, maximum of 24 feet. Now, it can, the driveway can flare out once you're 10 feet back from that, that right-of-way. So, there is potential for a house to have a wider driveway once you're back off of the right-of-way. So, it's not just 24 feet, the whole width, but you can flare out and have parking areas. But at, at the, at the road, it should be 24 feet is the standard.
But meet the setback on the side.
And meet the setback on the side, correct.
Yeah. That's important, too, that, and I don't know if everyone caught that when you were saying it earlier, but so the, the proposed amendment would be for these wider driveways in curb and, only in curb and gutter subdivisions, where lot coverage is still met. So, there would be no overage of lot coverage due to the driveway width. Just want to throw that out there again, since we were talking about that. I've got another picture here. This one's 36 feet wide. Not the best angle on that picture, but... Okay. So, that brings us to the setback request. It's part 2, basically, of the text amendment. So, we know there are some examples of this being an issue in Windswept Pines, Moat Crossing, some other locations in the county where people have poured driveway or parking spots in the 10-foot setback, which isn't allowed currently. Also, in these cases, they, these were not permitted additions to the driveway. They were not planned that way from the beginning. They were additions that were made in the field by, by either the builder or the homeowner. And, and so that's the, basically, the, where the request to reduce it to 5 feet comes from is to correct these existing issues that are out there currently.
So, after the certificate of occupancy was received, they went back and made the addition larger, the driveway larger?
Are you talking about, in the, in these cases where we're talking about setbacks?
Yeah.
Can you speak to that, Rachel?
I can't speak to that. I don't think in every case that was the situation.
Because, I mean, I mean, does the concrete driveway have to be in to receive the certificate of occupancy?
One, we had a condition to the CO.
She's asking if driveways have to be in place before the house is given a certificate of occupancy. And I, I believe that it does. If it's smaller than 3 acres, we require some hard surface material on there.
So, these driveways were...
Permitted.
One that you're showing, that you're showing us now, because, I mean, to me, did they get a certificate of occupancy with the driveway over the 24 feet? My question.
I can't answer to that. The building inspectors won't look at zoning. So, when they give their CO, they won't look at, this is a zoning issue. So, to get that zoning compliance permit, that they should have applied for, the building inspector typically wouldn't go out there and check for the driveway width.
Is there a requirement to have certification measurement prior to certificate of occupancy of the driveway? Yep.
It's just a site plan approval. And our building inspectors recently, after we've noted this issue, have been more involved in checking these driveways because, you know, they, ultimately, they're, they're, they're eyes on this, and, and they've been willing to go and, and measure these driveways and make sure, which is, it's just wow, we, we've noticed this error. But no, these were getting, particularly, potentially getting certificate of COs, certificate of occupancies with these wider driveways.
I mean, that one looks like it was put in after the fact.
That one was. And the one that you were on previously, they came in with a site plan for that.
For the building in the back.
For the building itself. And then after that was complete, they then installed the driveway. So, it was already, the house was there for that one in particular.
Yeah. That house was existing, and the, the building in the back is what spurred the, the driveway and the setback on that one.
So, every case, I couldn't tell you an answer. But these two particular ones, yes, it was after the fact.
I, I guess my concern is the people who especially got certificate, certificate of occupancies, when it was, whether it was 24 feet or 30 feet, they got a certificate of occupancy. Now, we're saying, you've got to go back, you know, if we don't approve this, you've got to go back and rip it out. But we approved it. So, how do you address that?
Well, well, we approved the site plan of what they were permitted to build. And the only way we have of checking for sure what the width is is to have the manpower to go out there and physically measure every driveway. Or sometimes we get...
I was required to hire an engineer before I got my certificate of occupancy to make sure that my drainage and my driveway culvert and everything was properly installed. That was a requirement. Did they remove that? Does that still exist?
Where's your house?
I live off of, in Summit Farms.
Oh, okay.
So, I was just wondering. I mean, that, I, I had to pay an engineer myself to have my driveway certified that my culvert and my...
Yeah. That's a requirement. The culvert certification is a requirement for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but this, we're talking about curb and gutter on the driveway width ones.
But the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't have that requirement there. Sometimes we get as-built surveys. When you're proposing something within a foot of the setback, we would get an as-built survey that would show exactly how everything, how wide everything is to scale. But in general, you, you come get a permit, you propose something, we approve that, and then that's what's supposed to be built.
Right.
And like she said, the building inspector's there to look at the nailing and electrical stuff, not the driveway width. But I guess they are ultimately the, the ones that brought this up.
Yes.
Because it was so wide that even they noticed, not even trying to look for it. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Well, essentially, they have a, they have site plan. They submit it. They get a site plan approval. And then they weren't, didn't necessarily bill to the site plan that was approved. And building inspector out there did notice that these driveways exceeded the site plan. And we have, sometimes we have better issues with having the site plans there in the field with the building inspectors. So, and that's what this was, we noticed that.
Again, I guess when I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to justify, you know, what decision I'm going to make, and I'm trying to be fair. And I'm also saying, well, I know if I would have bought a house and it got the certificate of occupancy, that now I'm having to go back and rip out a driveway because I'm not, I'm non-conforming. That kind of creates some sort of...
But they had the site plan before all that. And they're building it at site plan.
No. For the folks that came in, I understand what you're saying.
No, I was going to ask you if you know...
I'm, as a layperson who is buying a house and has a house built, and I move in, and my driveway's 30 feet. I don't know what your codes are, you know? I just move in. And unless, unless they specifically said, "I want it extra big," and that, you know, then that, that would be... I understand the runoff situation. That is a big concern. I guess my concern is also, you know, how many properties are we looking at that, you know, have to go back in that neighborhood and be cut back driveways? Number one.
Did you say there were seven, eight, seven in this particular neighborhood?
I think one of them has more than one issue. One has a setback issue.
And width.
And the width of the driveway as well.
Are you aware of whether any of them got a CO prior to this becoming a violation?
I know one, we did a conditional CO for. So, they, we found out about the situation, and they put a condition to the CO in order to get the CO.
But the ones prior to that?
But the ones prior, I couldn't tell you. Nobody has, I know from seeing site plans for these other ones, I've, I've seen it. But as for these ones, the site plan's all set 24. The other ones, where across, they submit an additional.
Okay. I'm not, I'm just trying to, trying to think about what's fair and, but... I'm just thinking out loud, I guess.
I understand. Yeah. It sounds to me like it's possible that there were some that did get CO with the driveways in place. I don't know. We'd have to do some research.
Okay. That's...
Anyone else have any questions? Oh, you're good. I, I guess, are you ready for questions?
No. We've still got a few more things here. If I can find the slides. So, I wanted to talk about, we, planning staff was able to meet with the county engineer to discuss this. And we came up with a list of concerns, I guess, that we have. And I'd like to just kind of go over those briefly. We'll start with the, the width greater than 24 feet. And this is basically what, what the county engineer had to say about this. Increased driveway width applies only to residential developments with curb and gutter infrastructure. That's what's being proposed. With curb and gutter, the section of the driveway within the right-of-way, which is the connection of the driveway to the street, so between the property line and the actual pavement, will typically drain to the street. Depending on the slope, layout, impervious area, and design of the lot, more lot area could drain to the street via the driveway. Larger driveways will mean more direct runoff to the curb and gutter section, which drains to catch basins and outlet pipes. If the UDO is changed to allow for wider driveways at the right-of-way, will the current infrastructure in existing developments, i.e. the gutters, catch basins, and outlets, be able to handle the increased flow of stormwater from the wider driveways? In existing developments, county staff will need to review revised stormwater calculations to verify the 40-foot-wide driveway drainage can be handled by the current infrastructure. In existing developments, any infrastructure, catch basins, gutters, outlets, et cetera, will need to be improved to meet additional flow if indicated by the revised calculations. In existing development, county staff will need verification from NCDOT that increased flow and any altered infrastructure will still meet NCDOT... flow in any altered infrastructure will still meet NC DOT standards and carrying capacity. Slope of the driveways will need to be minimal to limit velocity of runoff. Sheet flow from driveways that slope toward the street will have greater potential to impact properties on the opposite side of the street. The NC DOT standard for driveway width is 24 feet, and deviations from the standard are evaluated on a case-by-case basis. That's what I was talking about earlier, where they will allow up to 50 feet. And at this time, staff is unsure of the criteria used for determining that greater driveway width approval, so we don't really know what criteria they use to allow a 50-foot wide driveway, or one that exceeds 24. If driveways on a street exceed 24 feet, the 24-foot standard, will that impact NC DOT acceptance of the street into the DOT maintenance system? That's a big question. We don't know the answer to that right now. The above factors will need to be taken into account during the design of stormwater plan and infrastructure for curb and gutter residential developments. Consideration of aesthetics, at 40 feet wide, up to five vehicles can be parked at the right-of-way, and how will this impact the appearance of lots and the neighborhood in general? And what are the potential safety concerns for pedestrians and vehicular traffic movements from the sidewalk and roadway, respectively? So, that is a long list of just general concerns about it, maybe seeking more information on some points there for the driveway width portion of the text amendment. And then moving on to the setbacks, the reduced setbacks, one overarching goal of the driveway setback is to minimize runoff onto your neighbor's property. Current UDO standard is a 10-foot side setback for driveways and parking areas, and this provides more pervious area, which prevents more direct runoff onto neighboring lots, provides a larger area for infiltration without sheet flowing into swales and ditches. Lot line swales are required in all subdivisions, and lot line swales could be impacted with decreased setback of driveway and parking areas. And also driveways that require fill to even out the slope could violate ordinance requirement of no fill allowed within 10 feet of the property line. And then finally, staff would like the chance to do some benchmarking against other communities, to see how they handle setbacks, why they have the requirements that they have, and also, you know, other professional standards, so, and that's pretty much it for the concerns list. You have any questions about any of that, comments? Sorry, I just kind of spouted them off there, but...
Oh, you're good.
Okay. So, staff recommends denial of the text amendment as it's presented now? If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
If, if we deny now, how long will the people be able, how long will it be for them to conform?
Well, there's still the board of commissioners meeting.
Okay.
But if it ultimately gets denied at that level, I don't know the answer to that, Rachel. Is there a time limit?
We will have a set time limit, but that would be, obviously, want to work with the people, not be yet difficult to get, it's going to be more than one home, it's going to be the same contractor, so I think it'd be a reasonable expectation of when it would be...
We're usually pretty flexible about that, if you're trying to do something about the situation.
Pretty...
Ultimately, we want compliance, and we want to work with the property owners and the parties involved to reach that compliance, and we're pretty flexible.
All right, no more questions for staff at this time. Is there anyone present to represent the case? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mark Bissel, 3512 North Croatan Highway, Kitty Hawk. Well, I can start by answering the question about how many of them received COs prior to the driveway violation being cited, and that was all except one. It was on the last one, which was the seventh or eighth one, where the building inspector noticed that the driveway was exceeded the 24 feet. All the rest of them had received unconditional COs. And I'd like to mention that this is not really limited to windswept pines. If you drive around Muyak and the surrounding area, you will see dozens and dozens of driveways that exceed the 24-foot minimum. Some of them are old, many of them have been constructed since the ordinance was changed. So, there's a, there's a lot of people impacted by this. When we first proposed this, we had proposed language that was very, very narrowly crafted and would apply only to existing driveways. At the pre-application conference, staff suggested that it be applied more broadly to, to apply to more situations and to allow it in various zoning districts, so that we could solve as many problems as possible, but now has recommended against it. So, I want to address the staff concerns that have just been outlined. On the greater than 24-foot driveway width concerns, staff mentioned the problem with curb and gutter, or that's limited with curb and gutter, but the curb and gutter is part of the drainage system, that depending on slope, more lot area could drain into the street, that larger driveways could mean more direct runoff to the catch basins, that if the UDO is changed, will the current infrastructure be adequate? So, let me address that first. Generally speaking, yes, and that's the reason that we stated initially that it would be used only where allowable lot coverage has not been exceeded, because stormwater modeling is done typically based on the maximum allowed coverage on each lot in a subdivision. And in curb and gutter subdivisions, the modeling is done with the assumption that all of the water is going from the front of the house to the street, and is then handled by the curb and gutter and other elements of the drainage system. So, in existing developments, county staff will need to review, this is the next concern, review, revise stormwater calculations to verify that the 40-foot driveway drainage can be handled by the current infrastructure. In any development with a stormwater management permit, again, the maximum coverage has already been figured, but additional calculations can be done if necessary, or as necessary, to make sure that the drainage systems are adequate, based on the increased lot width, or the increased driveway width. Next, in existing developments, any infrastructure will need to be improved to meet, and it should say, it really should say, may need to be improved to meet additional flow, and this is really just speculation until the calculations are done, and if something more is needed, it can be provided. If it's not, it can easily be a demonstration that additional driveway width can be handled. Next was, in existing developments, county staff will need verification from DOT that increased flow in infrastructure will meet DOT standards and carrying capacity. Really, the same answer as before. The calculations will show that it meets it, or doesn't meet it. Next, the slope of the driveways will need to be minimal to limit the velocity of runoff. We don't really think this is related to width, you know, if the driveway is shorter compared to driveways that are longer, where you have stacking, your runoff is that your velocity is going to be less on a shorter driveway to the street that is wider than the velocity will be with a longer driveway that has more time to pick up a minimum. Sheet flow from driveways that slope toward the street will have greater potential to impact properties on the opposite side of the street. Well, that's really unclear how that's true. The DOT standard for driveway width is 24 feet, and deviations are evaluated on a case-by-case basis, and that's true. Up to, we were told up to 40 feet. Now, staff has gotten information that it's even greater, it's 50 feet, and it will be approved by DOT. When DOT was asked previously, the approval of a wider driveway was essentially automatic. And we had corresponded with Randy Midget, and he says, "The department's maximum driveway width restriction is 40 feet, unless otherwise approved by the division engineer, a driveway to serve a three-bay garage would ordinarily be approved." If driveway, driveways exceed the 24-foot standard, what impact, will that impact DOT's acceptance of the street into the DOT system? The answer is apparently not, based on Randy's answer and based on other jurisdictions that we have discussed this with. The factors will be, need to be taken into account during the design of the plan and the infrastructure for curb and gutter residential developments. And let me just mention that we proposed this to be limited to curb and gutter developments to make sure that we're not violating a, any stormwater, state stormwater permit requirement. The state port stormwater permits want the narrower driveways so that you're not piping a swale excessively, and whereas with a curb and gutter system, you don't have a problem with a potential violation of a state stormwater permit. So, generally, this has either been taken into account in the design, or can be, with a modified calculation. Question came up about consideration of aesthetics. At 40 feet wide, you can, you know, have more vehicles. Well, typically, you figure a 10-foot parking space, so you could have four vehicles side by side, but with a 24-foot driveway, if you had four vehicles, they would need to be stacked too deep, which would often encroach into the sidewalk area, unless you have a particularly long driveway. The next question is, what are the potential safety concerns for pedestrian and vehicular traffic movements from the sidewalk and roadway, respectively? So, in generally, in general, it appears that parking cars side by side rather than stacking them actually reduces the potential for cars to encroach into the sidewalk and pedestrian areas, and therefore should improve safety of the subdivision. And these are the reasons that we oppose the amendment, propose that the amendment would apply only to driveways that have a curb and gutter section rather than open swale, that will not conflict with any provision of a stormwater permit, that do not result in coverage above the approved built-upon area. We had also initially proposed that it would only apply to existing driveways, and we're still okay with that. Regarding the setbacks, the staff position is the overarching goal of the driveway setbacks is to minimize runoff onto your neighbor's property, and that is why the amendment was proposed, to allow decreased setbacks only when the decreased setback will not adversely impact the drainage swale or other facility, and that was language we specifically proposed, and will not require additional fill to be placed within 10 feet of a property line, unless that was already done as part of an improved stormwater permit. And this is to, specifically, to avoid adversely impacting neighboring properties. And again, we're trying to solve existing problems, and this would generally apply when we say, when we say a mass fill, this is where lots generally in new subdivisions have been uniformly raised, and your lot line swale then is typically constructed in a fill section, and your lots are at essentially the same grade, so that your runoff is not going from a higher lot to a lower lot, and you don't need that full width. And again, we're not proposing that all lots do this, but we're proposing that we solve these problems. As far as checking with other neighboring communities as to how this issue was being addressed, we did check with two neighboring counties in one town. We checked with Dare County, we checked with Camden County, your two neighbors, and we also checked with Kill Devil Hills, because we were doing a fair amount of business there right now, and I'll share those results. Kill Devil Hills says, "Parking requirements for single-family and duplex structures, driveways and parking areas shall not exceed a single or combined width of 80% of the total lot width, not to exceed 40 feet, whichever is less. And driveways and parking areas shall maintain a minimum of a two-foot side yard setback, and must maintain a five-foot setback in rear yards." Checked with Donna Creve, the planning director for Dare County. They have no maximum driveway width in Dare County. We talked about DOT accepting roadways, they have not had a problem with DOT accepting the wider driveways. Talked with Camden County, they have no maximum driveway width, they are aware of NC DOT's maximum of 40 feet, and have discussed this and called DOT in the past regarding approval of 40-foot driveways. DOT stated that they were okay, no special permission was required. Camden does have a maximum culvert length of 40 feet, and says only one culvert per lot, and that corresponds to the DEQ objective of not filling in too much of the swale, but they have no maximum driveway width. So, I asked, what is the county's risk in allowing an applicant to do the calculations to demonstrate that there will not be a problem with stormwater? Don't just say it can't be done, or that existing non-conforming driveways should be torn out, and again, it's not just limited to this one subdivision. The one example that was on the screen for Muyak Crossing, I'm familiar with that situation, and in that case, I think, where the owner told me that, because he called, he heard that we were involved in this, he called me and told me that his concrete contractor had told him and a number of other people in that subdivision that the county's standard was five feet, which is how those driveways ended up there. Anyway, we submit that this, in fact, is consistent with the land use plan, is not in conflict with the code of ordinances, is in fact required by change conditions, does address a community need, based on the large numbers of wide driveways we see in and around Muyak, could actually enhance public safety, and would not result in adverse impacts to the environment so long as they're properly engineered. Our initial proposal was to make this very narrow, that you could exceed the UDO width of 24 feet at the right-of-way line, but not exceed the DOT allowed width of 40 feet, that would be located on streets that have a curb and gutter section rather than an open swale, and which therefore will not conflict with any provision of the stormwater permit issued by the state. Do not result in increased lot coverage above the approved limit, do not result in excessive fill, and finally, exist as of the date of the adoption of the amendment. Again, that was broadened at the suggestion of staff, but we're willing to narrow it back to the original. And as far as the driveway side yard amendment, the initial proposal was that they encroach not more than five feet into a side property line setback, that do not adversely impact any drainage swale or other facility, do not result in excessive fill, and that's based on doing these in sections that have already been filled, in accordance with the stormwater management plan, and again, exist as of the date of the adoption. And again, exist as of the date of the adoption of the amendment in order to solve existing Again, we don't think there's a, any risk on the county's part in allowing an applicant to do some calculations to show that there's not going to be a problem, and this can solve a lot of problems for a lot of people, not just limited to the ones that were mentioned here earlier. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
On the NC DOT where it said you go up to 50 feet, with the properties you're talking about, it's already been done, did anybody try to get approval before that was done? Did anyone know? Or was it just done?
It's my understanding it was just done. Nobody really knew that it wasn't permitted.
Well, obviously, it wasn't on the site.
Correct.
So this wouldn't happen if they wouldn't have went to the site? And you could have went to the DOT, right, and got their blessing? Is that what you're supposed to do if you want a bigger than 24?
Well, DOT defers to the county. DOT will approve a 40-foot, even a 50-foot driveway, but they don't supersede the county's requirements. But they will allow it and they will accept a road that has it.
You got to try to get that blessing, I guess, from the DOT? By case-to-case thing?
No, it's, DOT only gets involved when you petition them to have a roadway taken into the state system. So they're not involved at that stage.
What he's saying is that they would still be required to meet county ordinance requirements regardless of whether they got a permit for a 50-foot driveway from DOT.
My concern is the acceptance of the road with DOT. The last thing you want to do is, which I know, is not have a road accepted by DOT.
Exactly. And we can certainly put that in as a condition. It's my understanding that NC DOT does not have a problem accepting those roads, but we can certainly suggest that that be the condition of the approval.
So we really don't know right now. We just don't know if DOT would accept this particular neighborhood, and they could actually turn it down because of these driveways.
Well, we have one in particular in this neighborhood that we asked specifically about, and they said 40 feet was fine with them. And as I mentioned, in other jurisdictions, they've also indicated, they've talked to DOT, and they're fine with 40 feet.
I posed the question to the engineer and specifically about what if all the driveways were able to have 40 or 50-foot wide driveways? And she didn't know the answer at the time, so I'm still waiting to hear back on that.
Is it normal to have? I mean, I mean, is there a neighborhood that's going to be, you know, 40-foot driveways? I mean, it's quite costly, isn't it?
Well, in this particular neighborhood, there were a number of homes that were built with three-car garages that were requested by those owners, which is why they have the wider driveways.
If they're all that size, would the curb and gutter be able to handle all the water
That's the calculation that the county is asking for in connection with the approval.
You start at the line 24, and you come in and go wider.
You could do that as well.
Because they're just saying at the property line, you can't, if you figure 24.
Right. And if that is done, if you do a 24 feet at the property line and then widen that out to 80 feet.
Well, you're in setbacks.
Within the setbacks, there's, you know, the county has no jurisdiction over that. So we're only just, we're only talking about the 10 feet that is between where the county allows it to flare out and the right-of-way line, which is where the sidewalk is.
Do we know how many subdivisions that have these problems with?
My client drove around and identified many. I don't have a particular documentation of them to show you tonight.
We're aware of the fact that there are a lot of driveways out there that were put in before we had these particular requirements, and I'm sure there are some where people have added to their driveways after the fact. But I don't know that there are, we're aware of too many newer subdivisions where there are multiple driveways at almost 40 feet, 30-some feet. Are you?
This includes countryside estates and Mooyaw Commons. Now, do they do have issues with the setback encouragement? They do, but then we've had it, we've had inspectors go out there and check those, and this is the only one with a significant, more than one property with that issue.
You talking about setback or driveway?
Driveway widths. As far as a newer subdivision, now, older homes that may have been in place prior to this, but as far as newer subdivision, this is the one.
What is the percentage of allowable lot coverage?
Generally, it's 30%. So on a 20,000-square-foot lot, that's 6,000 square feet.
I think we're missing some information. 40 feet's a big driver.
Are you trying to move forward with this tonight regardless, or do you want to wait for more information?
There are a number of people who have obtained time extensions from the county on compliance until after the county commissioners meet in December to take action on this issue.
Well, I mean, like Jason said, he was waiting for a response from DOT. Do you want to wait and get that response before we go forward? As well as calculations to see if the curb and gutter system will handle the water?
Well, I would like the county engineer to address Mr. Bissell's comments that he made about our concerns. I would like, that would be good to have Eric Weatherly weigh in on that and for us to hear back from DOT about whether, if a neighborhood with the majority of the driveways that exceed their 24 standard, 24 width standard, would be accepted into their system. And not just, you know, to me, on a case-by-case basis, is this one, but maybe not that one. And I would like to know that before.
But if we were to pass this and they all were that way, will they accept the road? That's what you're asking.
That's one of the, one of our questions we would like to hear from DOT.
Are you okay with that?
We're okay with that.
And as far as the enforcement process.
As long as the county would extend the.
As long as, is the enforcement process, as far as that's concerned, we consider this, they are trying to alleviate the problem with the text amendment, so we will stay the enforcement process on the driveway, on the code violations until this is, until the board of commissioners acts upon that.
Okay. I don't know if that changes anything.
But we're kind of missing information, the calculations. Mr. Weatherly, would be nice.
I'd like to know if DOT will still accept the road if all the driveways are 40-foot and the curb and guttering calculations, if the water, if it'll handle the water, if the water's going to go in the street and go right in the gutter and go where it's supposed to go, then that's different than if it's going to puddle up.
Those calculations would be a part of the approved text amendment, saying that they would be required, so that we're not really waiting on that to make the decision.
Okay.
But DOT, we.
But you could come up with.
Basically, you would need calculations for the number, for the driveways that would need to stay in order to allow them to stay, I think is what you're saying. And in the case of this particular subdivision, we're talking about, I believe, seven driveways out of 28 or 29 lots that have been built on in there. So it's not actually all of them.
He's not going to put another 40-foot driveway in, is he?
No.
Certainly not until.
And I don't think Phase Two will have any 40-foot driveways.
But your concern is legitimate, that if it gets approved as a text amendment, then it applies everywhere, and anyone can do that without any special anything.
So my question is, are we trying to open it up for anybody to be able to do it, or are we trying to do it for existing driveways that exist as of the date of the amendment?
You also stated you were willing to wheel some things back to what you had originally proposed.
Correct.
Well, essentially, the applicant had made the request to allow, to try to attempt to grandfather in something that didn't meet the standards at the time, and there was just no way you can write a text amendment that says, you know, essentially, you were issuing a variance without going through the board of adjustment process. And that's why we didn't want the narrow, the existing driveways. Well, the existing driveway should have met the 24-foot to adhere to the ordinance and to not, and to be in compliance with the ordinance, the driveway should have met the original 24 feet, and to say that it was just a very awkward text amendment. And so that's why we did not, staff did not choose to go that route with them, with Mr. Bissell.
Are you saying it's not permissible to have a text amendment apply to existing situations that are theirs of the date of the adoption of the amendment?
I'm saying the language of the UDO at the time was 24-foot, and you're basically asking us, the text amendment was then to go back and say that the, that those seven driveways, it was okay for those seven driveways to have exceeded that 24 width.
What we asked for was any driveways that exist as of the date of the adoption of the amendment can remain up to 40 feet in width.
But new ones would have to be 24. What you have here makes more sense.
If the county would prefer to open it up to new ones, we can do that, yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, I think you answered the question about the curb and gutter system, saying that the water is already calculated from the front of the house to the street to go in the street anyway. Is that what you're saying?
We can look at it on a case-by-case basis just to make sure and provide those calculations that the county engineer is asking for to make sure that that system can handle any driveways that would remain at the wider width.
What are the setbacks of this, of what are the setback requirements of each house? I mean, is it, I mean, my house is setback far, so if my driveway is, obviously, I'm plowing out more water, I guess.
The minimum setback is 20 feet in the front.
20 feet.
Most of them are setback more than that.
Because at 20-foot setback, to have a 24-foot opening and then try to put, try to put a, you know, additional pad, that's kind of hard to do with a short setback. I don't know. What do you want to do?
So you're okay with waiting a little bit to see if DOT will accept?
In writing, I suppose, from NC DOT on accepting these roads.
But does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Bissell? We need to, so, nobody else has any more questions for Mr. Bissell?
No.
Thank you. Does anyone, I'll open the public comment. Is there anyone here present that wishes to speak on this item? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Name's Chris Cromwell, and I'm at 104 Victory Court. And we had a house built last year, and the builder asked if we wanted kind of like this, a little smaller, a driveway going off to the side. And we said yes, paid extra money, and passed the occupancy, and we moved in. And we went to the county and tried to get a permit to build a shed, and they looked at the as-build, and I guess it wasn't matching. And then they, we were told to take out the drive, because it exceeded the easement by, I think, five feet. So they told us to, that we needed to rip out the driveway in order to pull any permit. And I was just kind of, I'm a contractor, mostly in Virginia. We, you know, we just moved here. I'm just wondering what protects the homeowner from, you know, you're passing our properties. And as far as I know, everything's good. And the inspector comes out, I just, I heard, you know, he doesn't look at zoning, but somebody's got to look at zoning if you're, we can't even pull a permit on something that we didn't do. You know, we, this isn't something where, I understand where some people add a driveway on a weekend and, you know, but we, you know, we tried to abide by the law and get a permit to do a shed, but then you're telling us to take out a driveway that we didn't even put in that was passed by the county. So, I mean, there's got to be something to protect the homeowner in that, you know, we need to tear out the driveway. Well, who, you know, and then the builder's like, well, we passed our inspection. So, you know, that, that's why we're here, is not for the 24, it's for the 10-foot easement to see if they were going to move that back to five. Obviously, it's getting postponed, but, you know, it was just kind of, well, we passed our inspection, what do you want us to do? So, I mean, I don't know. That's, that's all I have.
Are you, are you one of the pictures?
I'm not one of the pictures, but it's kind of similar to this where it breaks off to the right. It's, it's, it's almost identical, it's just a little shallower driveway. And they're telling us in order to get a shed permit that we would have to basically take it, take five feet out of that, and which, at that point, it's not even a driveway, it's a sidewalk. You know, it's like, it's, there's no point, you can't park a vehicle on the side of that, so.
Would what you're asking for work with what's proposed tonight with five-foot setback?
Five foot, I would need to take out two foot, but that's still a driveway. If I would have to take out five foot, I couldn't park a car on.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right. Anyone else? All right. We will close the public comment. Is there any discussions amongst the board members at this time? Is everyone okay with postponing this until we get an answer from DOT?
I think that's prudent to do that.
I am. I, I think that this could, this could potentially be, we can affect a lot of people.
Yes. Okay.
I propose to postpone until we get information from DOT, the guidance, at least a guidance from DOT, and that's my proposal.
All right. Is that a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I motion to postpone until we get guidance from DOT and possibly the new numbers that Mr. Bissell was talking about.
Okay.
Also speak with Mr. Weatherly.
All right. All right. We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. Next is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements to make tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement to make. You, well, hopefully, if everything keeps tracking the way it is, we'll be considering Currituck Station language in December. That's our goal, is to get something before you in December. We will have the, some of that information along with the pattern book for Currituck Station. That will go, and we hope to get you a link to that. It's going to be on our Economic Development Director's website, and Think Currituck, I think, is, is his website. Then we are working with the group that he deals with to get that, that information up, and when, when we have everything completed, we will send the planning board members along with other stakeholders a link for, for review of that. So hopefully, next, our goal is to get that link to you next week and to have some language for you all to consider in December. So culmination of our project moving forward, and hopefully, it's, we can see the end in sight on Currituck Station. We've been talking about it a long time, and let's see what we can do.
Sounds great. Are, are we still getting the land use plan items sometime?
We are still working on that. We've had the elected officials ask us to get some input specifically from your neck of the woods, Mr. Chairman, from, from Lower Currituck, and we need some further direction on that from, from the Board of Commissioners. But, and with the amount of projects, current zoning projects that we've had before us, we just haven't had the staff time to, to vote to that. But hopefully, everybody can take a breath and we can keep moving forward on that.
All right. I just have one more question on the motion we just made. Are the people he mentioned that have extensions, are they going to be, continue their extensions until?
Yes, we, we consider this, working with Rachel, our code enforcement officer. This has been, they are, they are in the process of trying to rectify their situation through, through this text amendment, and that will be factored into, essentially, it's a stay of, of the enforcement action until the Board of Commissioners.
I just wanted to make sure that us delaying it tonight doesn't cause them to get a fine or have to do something.
No, until the Board of Commissioners acts on it, it, it's basically, we have a stay in the enforcement action at this point.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone else have any, any announcements to make? All right. Well, the only thing I can say is, it was, it was very sad to see the Cotton Gin accident, and that was very nostalgic in our area in Lower Currituck, and it's just hard to see more of Currituck history going away, because I know what ends up getting built back never looks like something with that type of age on it, so. My thoughts go out to them, but other than that, that's all I have. Anybody else? All right. We'll have a motion. Anybody, motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.